Where is your break?
I'll show you.
Yeah, I'm gonna text you in faster. Give us one moment, folks. We'll start momentarily.
I want lives that we see enjoying.
Okay. Recording in progress. Recording in progress.
Let me know when you're good to go, Stephanie.
I'm good.
Good?
Am I good? Okay. Wonderful. All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 18th meeting of the City of Pacifica Planning Commission. This meeting is called to order. May I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Ferguson. Present. Commissioner Godwin.
Present.
Chair Hauser.
Present.
Commissioner Wright.
Present.
Commissioner Ferguson, would you please lead us in salute to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And before we start, I just wanted to say a happy 85th birthday to our liaison from the Water District. Jack, happy birthday. We're so happy to have you with us.
Thank you.
All right. So before we get into administrative business, any member of the public wishing to make comment on this agenda item or any agenda item should complete a speaker card and bring it to the front and hand it to staff. On the card, please indicate the agenda item on which you wish to comment or oral communications for items not on the agenda. Members of the public may also participate in the meeting via Zoom, and there's also a dial-in option on the screen. Once the chair has announced the public comment opportunity for the item on which you wish to comment, press star nine to raise your hand if dialing by phone or the raised hand function in Zoom. City staff will identify you by your name or by the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. If dialing in once identified for your turn to speak, press star six to unmute yourself, wait a few seconds, and then begin to speak. Be sure to mute any other broadcasts you may be watching such as Channel 26 or the live stream. I will call each speaker whether in person or by dial-in for their public opportunity, public comment opportunity, which will be three minutes. So that takes us to the agenda. And can somebody please make a motion to approve the order of the agenda? Commissioner Ferguson.
I move we approve the agenda as noted.
Commissioner Wright.
A second.
Please vote.
That motion passes unanimously.
Fantastic. And we have three meeting minutes to approve, those of June 19th, July 17th, and August 21st. Does anyone have comments or questions for staff, or if not, would they like to make a motion?
I have a quick comment. When we voted, we were out of sequence. So I just want to make sure that the votes are recorded correctly. In this case, it wasn't a problem, but...
Because if it were, we were all yeses, correct. So maybe we can do a practice vote really quickly. So everyone, please vote now. Shall we try that one more time? I'd like to make sure we have this right. So Commissioner Godwin, please vote. Okay. Commissioner Wright, please vote. Okay. And then here's my vote. So we're good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for pointing that out. So getting back to approval of minutes, does anyone have a motion? Commissioner Ferguson.
I take no issue with the minutes as included in the agenda packet, so I approve we, I move that we approve them.
Do you have a second? Commissioner Godwin.
I second Commissioner Ferguson's.
Okay.
Madam Chair, before you take a vote, I just want to confirm that none of the public comments that have been submitted, the cards, none of them relate to a request to make public comment on the minutes?
Oh, that's a, that's a great question, city attorney. Thank you. So it looks like we have...I just want to confirm. None of this looks to be on administrative business, but Mr. Vernazza, can you confirm you don't have an agenda item? Was this an oral communication?
I wanted to ask a question or make a comment about the, I guess we were moving in, not that I'm against it, I'm just curious about previous discussion, I think in the first or second session, I'm not sure if that's allowed.
Okay, okay. So that's, that's not on the administrative business, so we'll come to your, to your item later. And I guess I should ask, do we have anybody on the phone or on Zoom with a raised hand who wishes to make a comment on the administrative business?
We have no raised hands.
Okay. So I believe there was a motion by Commissioner Ferguson and a second by Commissioner Godwin, so let's please vote.
That motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Designation of liaison, I believe we're all being asked to attend the joint study session for the housing element with City Council on Monday. Staff, can you please clarify the time that that study session will be taking place?
Yes, Chair. It's a special and regular City Council meeting. So the regular, let me step back. It's a special and regular City Council meeting. The City Council's business will begin at 6:00 PM, and we anticipate the joint study session will start around 7:00 PM. So anyone that's interested specifically in this joint study session on the housing element should tune in or arrive at 7:00 o'clock. If they're also interested in other ordinary City Council business, they could start at 6:00 PM.
Okay, much appreciated. And I just want to make sure, is everyone who's here tonight able to attend the study session? Fabulous. Okay. Thank you. Are there any other liaisons that we need to designate, Mr. Murdock?
No, Chair, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to oral communications. So this portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes, and I would remind folks that the webinar link, the dial-in, and the instructions for raising your hand are on the screen right now. I do have one item for oral communications on cards, and just to clarify before, if the item, Mr. Vernazza, that you're wishing to speak about is on the agenda, this would not be the time to speak, but if it's off the agenda, this would be the time. Okay. All right. So Mr. Lawrence, I'll start with you, followed by Mr. Vernazza.
Good evening. My name's Cliff Lawrence, West Fairmont resident and self-declared ombudsman. So I come to you here in support of what you're doing. I thank you for your service. I want you to know that I don't believe that because people disagree, yes, they are sometimes opponents, but they're not enemies. And I want to work with you. I want to come to you with good questions. Tonight, I don't have anything so giant. I thought it was not a bad thing to come to you with something that I regard a little, as a little light. I watched the listings in Realtor.com, always looking for things that kind of catch my eye. And there was this one that shows a beach photo with it. Well, we're used to beach photos just being associated with other real estate. They want the buyer to know it's somewhere's in that area, even though it's not a picture of the building they're selling. It's kind of funny, but we got used to it. This is an exception. And I have copies for you. I'll leave you. But anyway, this is a, how is it we actually have sand property outside the rock lines to the waterline, and we're trying, this is just under two acres, and they're trying to get $688,000 for this? Now, a while ago, they, in their listing, they would say, "No tax information available." Well, not quite true. It's $284,000. Taxes are real. So somebody's going to get a surprise. Then, the other thing kind of amuses me is the flood risk is moderate. The pictures I have actually show the waters running on the property. So I guess my question, serious question, is that when I go to the assessor and I ask, "How is it that it gets assessed for this?" They say, "See, the planning department." And I don't have any answer for this yet. This does prompt me to ask the question, are there other owners of what's actually sand in the water? And do we want to be proactive about finding a solution for this before somebody gets burned really bad? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. And if you have handouts, you can pass them to staff. We'd love to take a look at them. Okay, Mr. Vernazza, and that's all I have for oral communications before we'll turn to Zoom and the phone.
All right. Thanks for your time and all your hard work. I believe it was the first or second meeting where we discussed sort of building standards, what the look and feel of these buildings would look like. And I believe Deputy Director frankly just didn't have the time, which makes a lot of sense. Hoping that it's possible, if it's not too late, to dedicate my time to provide that work for free to the city. You can check my background or education or whatever, but this isn't really rocket science. Is that a possibility to provide so that we can...selfishly, I don't want a boxed stucco building that's going to look horrible in six months, just like the Kolma Bart Station's already looking, and they're not even on the coast. Can I provide that to the city without breaking laws or not you being allowed to accept it? That was, that's why I'm here.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vernazza. I appreciate it. So I'm going to go now to phone or Zoom. Do we have any raised hands?
We do not.
Okay. I'll give folks another few seconds. Remember to press star nine if you're dialed in by phone or to press your raised hand function in Zoom now. Any changes? All right. Now. So that will conclude the oral communications. I do think it would be good to take an opportunity to re-ask some of the questions of staff. So kind of more generally, Mr. Murdock, can you speak a little bit to how members of the public can both give input on design standards and building standards, and if there's an email address that they could use for that? And then also, if you could speak a little bit to tax information and how to contact someone?
Of course, Chair. Good evening. Commissioners, Planning Director Christian Murdock. To the second commenter who indicates that he has some insights he'd like to share with respect to objective development standards, which is what I took from his comments, certainly we welcome that input from the community. He wouldn't be the first that submitted suggested potential objective development standards for high setbacks, et cetera. We would encourage those types of comments or suggestions to be sent via email to housing@pacifica.gov. Again, housing@pacifica.gov. That's the email address we're using to collect various public comments throughout the process on the housing element update. So we welcome his and any others' inputs on suggestions related to that, that process.
Mr. Murdock, are there going to be additional public comment opportunities at hearings or meetings?
Yes, Chair, there, there will be. So any future action by the Planning Commission and then City Council to consider, those objective development standards would require public hearings. There would be public input and comment opportunities. We would welcome any input of the type described tonight by the commenter as early as possible so that we can thoughtfully consider it. And so I would encourage him and any others, as mentioned, to submit those to housing@pacifica.gov. If email doesn't work, you can mail or drop them off to 540 Cresby Drive, where the planning department's located currently. As to the first commenter, I'm not sure exactly what role the city has in assessing properties for property tax purposes, other than setting the land use that's permissible, which in turn can influence the county assessor's evaluations for a particular piece of property, which is what I interpret the comment to be related to and the referral from the county assessor's office to the planning department. Seeing as the site in question, to my knowledge, is private property, it likely has a land use designation based off of the 1980 local coastal land use plan, which may have provided for some economic use in the form of residential development. Without, without knowing specifically the property location, I can't tell you what that designation is currently. But what I can say is, even though there is perhaps a land use that would allow some sort of economic use, there would also need to be technical analysis of hazards and development potential consistent with the Coastal Act and the city's local coastal land use plan. And so it's not possible to say right now whether or not, or what type or intensity of development could actually occur. That would require a coastal development permit application and an in-depth analysis and eventual public hearing to determine all of that.
Okay. I appreciate that clarification. And just for the, for the public, just a reminder that cityofpacifica.org, under the Committees and Commissions page, all of our personal, or not personal, all of our direct emails are available there as well. So with that, I think we'll keep moving on with our agenda items. So...
One more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Wright.
You had mentioned that he would have, the second speaker would have numerous opportunities in the future, whether it's at council or it's here at our commission. What is the best way for the public at large to find out about what the agendas are and when those opportunities are?
Sure. Thanks, Commissioner Wright. So my first suggestion would be for anyone interested in the housing element process to go to planpacifica.org, and you can sign up and subscribe to our interest list for the housing element update process. We send out announcements of upcoming public input opportunities, review opportunities for draft documents, public hearing notifications, et cetera. And then for anybody that's interested in signing up for the actual agenda notifications for when those are released between 72 hours or more for the various Planning Commission and City Council public hearings, they can email the planning department directly at permittech@pacifica.gov or find my email address on the planning department website. We'll get you signed up for, or get those folks signed up for those agenda distribution notification lists.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments before we move on? Okay, fabulous. Okay, so no consent items tonight, which takes us to new public hearings. So CDP-453-23, file number 2023-029, coastal development permit, CDP-453-23, for demolition of an existing fenced area and construction of a new 1,920 square foot storage structure at Sharp Park Golf Course located at One Sharp Park Road. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name's Stephanie Cervantes, Senior Planner with the Planning Division. Tonight, I will be presenting file number 2023-009, demolition of the existing fenced enclosure and construction of a new golf cart storage structure at the existing Sharp Park Golf Course. The site is in the Sharp Park neighborhood. The site has a 1980 coastal land use plan designation of Sharp Park Municipal Golf Course and a zoning designation of public facilities with a public vote required to rezone. The site is also within the appeal jurisdiction of the city's coastal zone. The project proposes to build a new roughly 1,900 square foot storage building located in the same general area as the fenced enclosure. The structure will be approximately five, I'm sorry, 11 feet, 6 inches. The city received one public comment in support of the project. However, the letter did also state two concerns. The project is conditioned to use natural color palettes as specified in the project materials, and the project will also be removing the parking spaces to the north of the structure and will restripe that area to a no parking zone, which will increase the drive aisle width and create better visibility for golf carts, pedestrians, and drivers. Staff believes that the project is consistent with the 1980 local coastal program and that it provides an improvement to an important lower-cost recreational opportunity and reduces energy consumption with the transition from gas golf carts to electric golf, electric golf carts. The project is also consistent with the city's design guidelines, the implementation plan, and the public recreation policies of Chapter 3 of the Coastal Act. As such, staff recommends that the planning commission find the project exempt from CEQA and approve CDP-453-23. Thank you, and I am available for questions as well as the applicant.
Thank you, Ms. Cervantes. And before I move on to questions, does the applicant have any sort of presentation tonight?
No, the applicant's just here for questions.
For questions. Understood. Okay. Do any commissioners have questions for the applicant? Or for staff? I'm sorry. I should clarify that. Commissioner Wright.
I'd be happy to start. I noticed that you mentioned reduction in energy consumption. Do you know if there was any consideration paid to whether they were going to put solar panels on and perhaps a battery so that they would make their own electricity to charge their golf carts with?
Commissioner Wright, commissioners, that is not part of the project. At this point, the applicant has not indicated that the site will incorporate solar.
Thank you. That was it?
I was hoping the applicant could speak a little bit more to, I see an amendment to their letter. It's black and white, so it's hard to see the colors. But just, the applicant could speak a little bit more to their letter and subsequent letter, and then a little bit more to the energy efficiency of the new golf carts.
I have the colors here.
Awesome.
If you would like to see them.
Sure. I would, I would much appreciate that. So...
And then I did have one, one other quick question while they're doing that. In the little map that you presented, I saw that there were three trees in the lower area. I assume you analyzed the site to make sure that we're complying with our heritage tree ordinance?
Yes, Commissioner Wright. So the property is owned by the city and county of San Francisco, so the city is limited in land use regulations that we can impose on the property. So the project was not reviewed for tree ordinance compliance.
Thank you.
I had a procedural question on that because it is City of San Francisco. Is it only before us because of the need for a coastal development permit?
That's correct.
Okay. So can we invite Mr. Harris to answer the questions that we had for the applicant?
Yeah, so I do have someone in the audience as well as someone online. So I'm gonna court, I'm gonna allow you to speak, and then you and Mike can decide who will be answering these questions.
And, and please introduce yourself for the record.
So just to clarify, we're hearing from the applicant right now, correct?
And, and just to answer questions at this time.
Court Edom, you should be able to unmute yourself. Court, it looks like you have unmuted yourself. You can start speaking.
So I don't know if you can hear me. This is Court Edom with San Francisco Recreation and Parks. I'm the project manager.
We can hear you. Thank you. So I'm not sure if you heard the, the questions. I was hoping that we could get clarity.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Can you hear us?
Hi, this is Court Edom with San Francisco Recreation and Parks.
Maybe staff could, could restate the questions that I had.
Look, Court, can you confirm that you can hear us?
What, what questions did you have specifically?
Yeah, so one of the questions was regarding speaking about the transition to electric golf carts.
So maybe we can come back to Court. I do have a speaker card here, and I know that Mr...
I apologize. There's about, there's about a one-minute delay up my end.
Well, please go ahead if you can hear us now. We'll give you some extra time.
And Court, I'm not sure if you're participating directly through the Zoom application, but typically that has the shortest lag time, far, far less than one minute. If you're monitoring the audio through the online live stream, it's likely to have a significant lag of the type that you're describing. So I'd encourage you to make that adjustment and just use the Zoom application if you're able.
So, Ms. Cervantes, you mentioned that there was another member of the applicant team in the audience, and I would welcome them to come answer questions. Otherwise, I'm going to go to public comment, and we can come back to the applicant questions after.
And Mike Shorty, Court, of course, is the owner of the project from San Francisco.
Hey, thank you, thank you, Christian. The Zoom is not working on my end.
Please go ahead.
He has difficulties on Zoom, apparently. I apologize. Would you please repeat the questions? I'd be glad to see if I can answer it.
Sure. So I was hoping to get a little bit more information about your transition to the electric golf carts.
Sure. What, what the plan was originally, since it was all the fuel, gas golf cart, and it was stored in the whole area, we tried to go for the clean energy. So we are proposing to go ahead and structure, the existing structure to be removed, and these electric golf cart, which will be more towards the green environment and benefits the environment... the environment as well, so removing all the gas carts out of there and be electric, all be electric golf cart so the public can use on that side. That's basically the whole project is, and for, as far as the electric part, I guess another commissioner had a question regarding batteries. Those are as new, it's unknown to us because it has not been purchased, that's the next phase that it comes in, but I'm sure that all of that gets facilitated in the structure if it has to be maintained, whatever needs to be done. I'm not familiar with the maintenance of the golf cart.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions for the applicant before we move on? Okay, and I think I misunderstood, Mr. Harris is not with the applicant team, understood. Okay, so I'm gonna retract that question, and then I'm going to move to open public comment.
I've got one.
Commissioner Godwin.
The, the fuel tank, as stated in the plan, is going to be removed from the property.
Yes.
Correct.
That is correct. It's in process, since it's a hazmat, we have to have a special permit for that to be removed, and it's in process, well, yes, that will be all removed. There is no gas allowed on the side at all.
Thank you.
I, I have one more question, which is, this is just come a little bit of a left turn, but does the golf course currently use reclaimed water from the water district?
That I'm not familiar with that. Unfortunately, I cannot answer that question.
I'm a little more familiar with that. They use it on four holes, and it's greatly appreciated. I hope at some point they get the opportunity to do it on the entire golf course.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any last questions?
Sorry, it was a question I was gonna ask before I saw the memo when I sat down. Could you by any chance confirm if the Emerald Forest color is a match to the other existing dark green structures that are on the north end of that parking lot?
The, the color of the thing that has been proposed?
Correct, this Emerald Forest, I just wanted to know if that's the same dark green color. It's hard to tell with swatch, right?
I have a black and white, so I cannot tell you, but mainly it matches the environment. They want to make sure the color that has been selected blends in with the golf course, so it's not really outstanding, like a sore thumb to stay out there.
Yeah, I saw the swatch. The question was just if it was an attempt to match the existing buildings or not. There's, there are existing forest green structures at that end of the parking lot. I was just trying to, trying to understand if it was the same color or a...
I, I don't recall that. I don't have that color chart in front of me, but I know it's a lighter color on the body, and the roof, of course, has probably that color to kind of blends in as far as the top view goes.
So I agree, it's a good question.
That's just I'm going with the memory on that.
Yeah, no, we appreciate it, and maybe, I don't know if staff has clarity on that. It sounds like staff participated in that.
Stephanie, may you add that, I'm sure they had it, on a color chart that it was provided?
Yeah, I just saw that there is a recommendation of making it a condition of approval, so somebody has done some work on this.
It's very similar, but it's not exact.
Okay. Okay, well, we can come back to that during deliberation then. Okay, any, any more questions? Okay, now I am going to open the public comment, period. So if we could put on the screen the call-in and dial-in information once more? And then I'll move to the one comment card I have, which is Mr. Harris. Mr. Harris, are you available?
Any more questions?
No, I think for now we're, we're okay, thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, commissioners. I'm Richard Harris. I'm resident of the Haight-Ashbury, and I am the president of San Francisco Public Golf Alliance. We represent about 7,000 public golfers, many of which are residents of Pacific hundreds. We submitted two letters that raised the color question and the issue of the, there's a traffic congestion that will be created when the new building is put in, and it will create a blind turn required of the cart jockeys who are returning carts. They will be turning into what is now a one-way and narrow. And I've outlined that for you in, in our first letter at pages two and three. As to the color, I gave you a second letter. We got color chips. The letter that you have, you've seen a black and white. I've sent you a PDF of a color that has the color chips that were provided to us, thanks to Mr. Edom, and thank you, Court. And, and we're satisfied on that color point. The, the traffic point, we didn't see anything in the plans, in the, in the writing that is before you, that, that, where it says that that gas tank will be removed. We're told that it will be removed, but it, there's nothing in the plans that says that it will be removed. And, and right now, between that gas tank and a, and a parking spot next to the gas tank, which is, did my time just run out?
No, you have one minute.
Okay. There is a large parking spot, which is currently written on the, on the ground, staff parking only, and it is often occupied by a very large truck that, that also juts into that traffic lane. On your plan, that parking spot is marked no parking, but that isn't in fact what is on the ground right now. And between those two interferences, that throws the, that, they would throw carts coming in with the cart jockeys into this very narrow traffic lane. That could be solved by removing the four parking spots north of the light that shows up on the, on your plan. And I, I don't think San Francisco wants there to be a traffic problem there, it's a safety problem.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
And I think that Pacific should not want it either. So I'm, we're putting that on the record, calling it to your attention, hoping for a solution, notwithstanding all of that, we support this cart barned as needed.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Thank you.
Okay. I have no more yellow cards for this item, so if anyone else in the room wishes to speak, I encourage you to fill out a card. Do we have anyone on Zoom or on the phone? A reminder for those who are called in to press star nine to raise your hand.
We have no raised hands.
Okay. We'll give folks another couple seconds.
Chair Howser, while we're waiting, the applicant representative, Court, disconnected briefly and is reconnected. Let's offer an opportunity to confirm if there's any improvement in the lag, in case he has the opportunity to follow up on any of the commission's questions.
Certainly, I'll come back to him after a public comment. So, Ms. Servantes, are there any additional raised hands? Notwithstanding, Court?
There are none.
Okay, with that, I will close the public comment, and let's go back to the applicant to give them an opportunity to see if their technology has been, technology issue has been resolved, and to give them an opportunity to add anything that was potentially missed.
Court, if you're there, you should be able to unmute yourself and confirm how the, the lag is working at this point.
I have just received a text that says Zoom is not working.
Okay, thank you.
If you would like, I can address this.
Thank you, I think, okay, so with that, we'll...
I think there is still a lag on my side.
But, okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
I believe the Zoom is muted, it looks like, from Pacifica.
Well, I think, I think what we'll do then is bring it back to the commission for questions and deliberation. So Commissioner Godwin, is this a remainder light here, or?
No, go ahead.
Does anyone want to start, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wright?
Sure. Well, I'm, I'm just, a lot of the reason I moved to Pacifica was because there's so many opportunities for outdoor recreation. I personally am not a golfer, but getting rid of gas-powered vehicles, big, big plus, all for it. I'm glad to see San Francisco continuing to work with us, to support us, and continuing to keep what makes Pacifica special, special, and I, I do appreciate it, and I look forward to working with them in the future for other outdoor activity.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Ferguson?
I guess this will be a question, if, if someone has an answer. I noticed in the, in the staff report that there's only provision for working on electric utilities within the existing paved areas, and it, it seems to me that the new structure abuts a lot of unpaved areas, or areas that are not currently paved, and if it is the intention for this building to be some sort of a electric cart charging station that requires electric infrastructure, now would probably be the time to install that underground before you put the building in, so I don't know if it's the intention to do that later on another phase, or if something's been missed here, if somebody could...
Commissioner Ferguson, is that a condition of approval, or is that... Which, which number, condition of approval it is?
Five.
Five? So if staff wants to clarify, condition number five?
Yes, Commissioner Ferguson, electrical work, utility connections are not part of this project. Condition number five is more of an FYI to the applicant, that if any future electrical utility connections are needed for the project, because we don't have the battery capacity that's going to be needed for the golf carts and such, that type of information, so if there will be additional projects associated with utility connections related to this, it will need to be part of a separate application.
Sure, that, that was my understanding of the condition. I was curious to the applicant if they were going to put in provisions for future in, under the footprint of the building, or if there was any idea for addressing that now, or if we were gonna come back and have a whole separate plan to put that infrastructure in after the building later.
Ms. Bizano, I'd like to make sure that if the applicant has answers to our questions, that they're willing, or that they're able to give an answer. Do we need to reopen public comment to do that?
Yes, so you would reopen the public hearing to do that.
Okay, so I'll reopen the public hearing. Do you have any additional clarifications?
Just to answer your question that you said as far as, there is a current existing electrical infrastructure in place, which is close to the building, so it will be as a matter of the demand for the golf cart and the charging, the required charging, that they can easily pull the cable, there's already existing conduit out there, that pull it to the building. And the building is already, it's sitting actually on the asphalt, so the structure has asphalt base, and I don't see any other additional environmental impact because we really want to have to save the environment, especially on that facility, on that area.
Sure.
I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, I was just hoping to save you guys the trouble of doing this permit application twice for this.
Well, the other one will be for electrical, because it's totally separate parcel, because we don't know what the selection of the golf cart is gonna be.
Sure.
So it's really very premature that we say this is gonna be, because we're gonna hear what the...
My concern was having to trench underground in the future and reopen all of this.
No, 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 not at all, not at all, no. There's already existing conduit that it comes to the building.
That answers my question perfectly, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If, if you wouldn't mind staying, I have a couple questions for you. So you did mention that the, that you would be removing the fuel tank. Is that something that you are, and I agree that it's not on the drawings, is that something that you're willing to kind of commit to with this project?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, that's absolutely, that has to be removed regardless.
Okay.
But we are waiting for the hazmat, since it's, that's a little different project.
Sure.
It's not just pulling it out, so.
So if staff could potentially recommend a condition that, you know, isn't a time, like a time imposition to the applicant, that might be helpful. And then just to clarify, the drawings that show the no parking space on your site plan, and this is on sheet B-1, so next to the fuel tank, are you, this is new no parking striping that you're adding to prohibit parking in that space?
Yeah, those areas are gonna get restripped to make sure that there's adequate passage for the golf cart to safely exit, as well as that little turn which is on that side of it, that's gonna be restripped to make sure the public knows where they can park.
Okay.
We, we are big fan of safety on that part.
Sure.
We want to make sure we meet that requirement.
Okay.
Even though it's not mentioned that it was not, but it will be done, you could put as a condition if they want.
Well, and I, I see that on the plan, so I don't see a need for a condition, but it is helpful just to get that second clarification on the record, that it's no longer gonna be staff parking.
No, 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 not at all.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, so with that, I'm gonna reclose the public hearing, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any last thoughts, deliberation?
If there is any way to speak to Court and have him answer if he has any consideration to the traffic issue that was raised, or if he'd like to, I think it'd be important for him to have the opportunity to speak to that, because ordinarily, he would have had three minutes to rebut the public comment.
Well, I, I think he texted his colleague that his colleague could answer the questions, and I think we just went through the two questions about traffic, so I believe that the traffic questions were related to removing the fuel tank, which I believe will, I'm personally going to recommend a condition, and the applicant has said that they were okay.
Am I live now?
And that parking space for the truck, one moment, please, the parking space for the truck is not gonna be staff parking anymore, it's striped no parking, and that's already reflected on the drawings, so.
In that case, I'm ready to make a motion.
Chair, we did prepare language for a condition of approval, as you requested. We've prepared, prior to project completion, applicant shall remove the existing fuel tank and associated equipment and piping in accordance with all applicable building code and environmental regulations.
I'm sorry, can you read that one more time?
Prior to project completion, applicant shall remove the existing fuel tank and associated equipment and piping in accordance with all applicable building code and environmental regulations.
Perfect. That is amenable to me. Before we take motions, I just want to commend the applicant on a more sustainable way of doing things, and I'm very happy to know that at least four of the holes are reclaimed water irrigated, so hopefully more folks in Pacifica will continue to use our reclaimed water. Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah, I think the parking space next to the fuel tanks for the fuel truck, so I think we also ought to include the language in there that says that has to be marked no parking.
That, that is reflected on sheet B-1 as new striping that says no parking, so I don't think we need a condition.
Okay.
Unless staff disagrees. I'm seeing head shakes.
I think where the no parking is indicated on the site plan, with removal of the gas tank and equipment, it's not clear there'd be enough room for parking there, so we could clarify that, you know, the no parking striping should replace the area of the existing tank, for example.
Do you think that we need a condition with the no parking shown on, on sheet B-1?
I mean, I think it's, it's prudent. It's possible someone with a motorcycle or, you know, some smaller vehicle could try to park in between there, even though a larger vehicle would not be able to fit.
Okay, then we can add that condition. Any other thoughts?
Can we, Madam Chair, could we ask the applicant if he'd be amenable to that additional condition of approval relating to the parking?
Sure, so I will reopen the public comment, period, again. And so I know we had spoken about the, the fuel tank. Are you amenable to an additional condition that says that you'll stripe that area no parking?
Absolutely, no problem.
Thank you.
That, that fuel tank will be removed, striped no parking, the sign will be posted, and that's all we can do for, hopefully, public obey.
Okay.
And, and since the applicant is, is at the podium, if we could get his concurrence on the condition that was previously suggested by Planning Director Murdock about the removal of the tank?
We will do that, that's no problem. That should be done.
Can...
Okay, thank you.
That's already in the process, but unfortunately, we haven't received the actual permit for hazmat material to be removed. That, that process is a little bit different than normal process.
Okay.
But it will be removed prior to completion of the project.
Court, I hear you trying to speak now, and it sounds like you're live and in real time, so since the public hearing is reopened and the applicant is speaking, why don't you go ahead and add your thoughts?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I'm sorry about all the legs. I think the Zoom was muted earlier, which was the delay. So in regards, the, as everything Mike has said is correct, just in regards to the gas tank removal, the one holdup on that is that that's actually the responsibility of the tenant, and that's not San Francisco Park gas tank, and so that might be the one holdup on that. It will be removed, I just can't promise a timeline from them.
Is the, the way the condition was worded, it said at time of project completion, so it wouldn't hold up the permit, it wouldn't hold up construction or demolition, I believe it would just hold up a final of that permit. Is that something that the applicant is amenable to?
I believe so, but it's, it's hard to say when it's the tenant's responsibility. I just don't know when they would mobilize on that.
So then what I, what I would like to propose is we keep the condition as worded, and then add, or at the director, or at the discretion of the planning director, so if additional information comes to light, that Mr. Murdoch has the authority to adjust the timing. Are you amenable to that, Mr. Murdoch?
I am in concept, Chair. I'd like to take a moment to confer with the city attorney.
Sure.
Yeah, and we would be agreeable to that, too, because we can, we can work around the parking spaces to make space there, if they're, if they're lagging behind in removing that gas tank, we can make space other ways.
Sure, and we don't want you to have to come back to us for timing with your tenant.
Sure, I appreciate that.
Does that open the...
The applicant is amenable to the condition with my proposed wording. I think the question, Ms. City Attorney, is if you and staff are amenable to that addition.
Does that open the door, though, to continued extension, extension, extension forever, and then we never get the tank removed?
Let's give the city attorney a second to review the condition.
So we think we have some language presented, and then, but if it's not acceptable to the planning commission, maybe we can take a five-minute break.
Sure, and before that's presented, I think I'd like to ask court, are you amenable to having a ticking clock on the no parking striping, or is that also somehow controlled by the tenant?
The no striping parking is fine, yeah, we can, we can implement that.
Okay, so, but for all intents and purposes, so Ms. Bazano, I don't know if you heard that, but if the staff parking space next to the fuel tank is able to be striped no parking quickly, it's not, you know, I don't think people are going to still be utilizing the fuel tank, it's just the timing it comes out, which is helpful, so we would be happy to entertain staff's recommendation on wording.
I think Mr. Murdoch and I are struggling with the language a bit, because it's, the applicant has stated that it's the responsibility of the tenant to remove the tank, and so we are trying to fashion the wording so that it reflects that the applicant will cause the removal of the existing tank, and then provide language in case that removal is contested, or there are, there's some delay on the removal. So at this point, the language states as follows. Prior to project completion, applicant shall cause removal of the existing fuel tank and associated equipment and piping in accordance with all applicable building code and environmental regulations, unless applicant demonstrates to the satisfaction of the planning director that the fuel tank cannot be removed. Following removal of the fuel tank, applicant shall fill in the area to continue the no parking striping from where it is shown on the site plan to the new building. The planning director may grant additional time to complete the, oh, that part needs to be removed, right? The planning director may grant additional time to complete fuel tank removal for good cause? I think that's addressed already. Okay, so the planning director may grant additional time to complete fuel tank removal for good cause. So that's the language we've...
Can we put a not to exceed timeline on there?
I, I don't think we can. I think, I think it's something that Mr. Murdoch, like, I, I don't know Christian to be one that just lets things lag and lag and lag, right? So I, I'm pretty comfortable with staff having the authority that we've put in here, especially if it's clear that the no parking striping is happening at the beginning of the demolition, or like, earlier in the demolition. I think personally, and let, we should all talk about it, but personally, that's a well-worded condition, with the one clarification that it should not be confused that the additional stretch of the, stretching of the no parking area includes the staff space going to no parking. That space should be carved out to be happening precedent to the area that the fuel tank covers.
So instead of one condition of approval, you would suggest adding a separate condition of approval regarding the parking striping?
Correct, and so that part, and I believe the applicant indicated that they were amenable to that, and that it could, that could happen as a condition of project completion. So that could be part of getting the permit final. Would staff, would staff like to take a five-minute recess?
That would help. I don't have a clear understanding right now where the staff parking space is relative to the no parking zone relative to the gas tank.
Sure, so Ms. Bazano, since we do have public comment open, do we need to close and then reopen public comment after the recess, or can we leave it open for the recess?
No, the public hearing is closed at this point, correct?
Well, I believe it's open because the applicant is able to answer questions, so I had reopened it for the applicant to answer questions.
Oh, I see, yes, I forgot.
Sure.
Yes, so you would close public hearing, and the chair could ask for her, her colleagues if they're amenable to a five-minute recess.
Sure, sure. So I will reclose the public hearing, I'm sure we will reopen it once more after the recess, and if...
Can I ask one question of staff before we have a recess?
Yes, please.
As a, as a follow-on to the fuel tank removal question, do we know if, because it's two separate entities conducting these projects, would there be an additional coastal development permit required for the remediation work of removing this existing fuel tank?
In my opinion, likely not. It's described in tonight's public hearing. Otherwise demolition ordinarily, ordinarily does require a coastal development permit, but we're already in that process in relation to the project.
It could fall under this development permit?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
That's a good question, for asking. Any, any other questions before we take our five-minute recess? Okay, with that, it's 7:59, we will reconvene at 8:05.[1101.51]
In my opinion, likely not. It's described in tonight's public hearing. Otherwise demolition ordinarily, ordinarily does require a coastal development permit, but we're already in that process in relation to the project.
It could fall under this development permit?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
That's a good question for asking. Any, any other questions before we take our five-minute recess? Okay, with that, it's 7:59. We will reconvene at 8:05.
We did it.
Maybe just the police department. Do you have their, do you have their non-emergency phone number? Do you want to touch them? 650? 738? 73?
Madam Chair, we have closed the public hearing and we're back to the Planning Commission for deliberations. Staff has talked on some additional, two additional conditions of approval, and so Planning Director Murdock can read those. Okay, and before, before we start, I just want to check with PCTRU, is everything, you're ready on your end?
Okay, we're ready to go.
Perfect. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Murdock.
Thank you, Chair. So the first condition relates to removal of the gas tank and reads as follows. Prior to project completion, applicant shall cause removal of the existing fuel tank and associated equipment and piping in accordance with all applicable building code and environmental regulations unless applicant demonstrates to the satisfaction of the planning director that the fuel tank cannot be removed. The planning director may grant additional time to complete the fuel tank removal for good cause. And the second condition would read, following removal of the fuel tank and prior to project completion, applicant shall fill in the area to continue the no parking striping from where it is shown on the site plan to the new building. The applicant shall also extend the no parking striping to include the existing staff-only parking space adjacent to the former location of the fuel tank.
I think we'd need the clarification on the staff parking, that that is at completion of project and in no way tied to the removal of the fuel tank, which the applicant indicated was acceptable. And so I think it's really important so that we're not having those traffic safety issues that we're removing the possibility for a truck, a car, any sort of vehicle to be in that current staff parking space.
I think just remove that, that it's tied to the fuel tank. So the parking space and the staff parking space would just be on its own.
Right. I, yeah. So may I make a recommendation to staff? I would bifurcate the second condition and I would put the portion of, that's related to the fuel tank area in that precedent condition. And then I would take the staff parking space and make it its own condition tied to project completion and permit final.
So what we'd propose to do sounds similar, but please confirm. So we'd propose to split into a third condition, which would read, independent of the fuel tank removal, applicant shall extend the no parking striping to include the existing staff-only parking space adjacent to the former location of the fuel tank. We should just take out the last part, so.
I, I also think, so that, that is a perfect condition, but instead of extend, I would say re-stripe the staff parking because I think extend is still related to the previous discussion. So if the rest of the commission is amenable to it, unless there are comments, I'd like to give staff the opportunity to read the three conditions again, to ask any questions that we have, and then to reopen the public hearing one more time to make sure that those three conditions are amenable to the applicant. Any concerns?
Great.
Okay. So Mr. Murdock, as you're ready, we'd love to hear the update on the three conditions.
So we would have a new second condition, following removal of the fuel tank and prior to project completion, applicant shall fill in the area to continue the no parking striping from where it is shown on the site plan to the new building. And a new third condition, independent of the fuel tank removal, applicant shall re-stripe the staff-only parking space adjacent to the fuel tank as a no parking area.
I'm sorry, can you read number three again?
Independent of the fuel tank removal, applicant shall re-stripe the staff-only parking space adjacent to the fuel tank as a no parking area.
That then needs to have the words prior to project completion? The second, tell me when you're ready.
Independent of the fuel tank removal, applicant shall re-stripe the staff-only parking space adjacent to the fuel tank as a no parking area prior to project completion.
Perfect. On the second condition, I believe we have to remove the words prior to project completion because it's associated with the timing in the first condition.
Staff's recommendation would be to keep that language to indicate the project is not complete until the fuel tank has been removed.
Okay.
And the re-striping is completed.
So for the.
With the discretion that we talked about?
Yeah, for the, for the benefit of the commission and the applicant, and I apologize because I know this is a lot of condition reading, but if you could read one, two, and three in that order, I think that would be helpful.
Before I do that, should we revise the second one to indicate that if removal of the fuel tank, if the fuel tank cannot be removed, this re-striping shall not be required? I think that closes the loop between the first one and the second one. That's the filling in the gap striping. There's a, there's a, an issue there. If the fuel tank cannot be removed in the first condition, the second condition says following removal of the fuel tank, so it just leaves it open-ended.
I think the intent is to remove the safety component and unless we make sure 100% that that is what we are doing, I think that's what our concern is. And if you, if staff and the city attorney's recommendation is, is that we have fulfilled that goal, then I would defer to your better, sounder legal judgment as opposed to mine.
I think Planning, Planning Director Murdock's concern is that the second condition is dependent on the first condition. And so he's trying to close any, to clarify what the timing requirements would be if the first condition isn't met.
Is that pretty amenable to that language?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I missed that?
Where I believe you have four folks who are amenable to that language, but I think it would still be helpful to hear one, two, and three in order and then open it to the applicant.
So the first new condition of approval would read, prior to project completion, applicant shall cause removal of the existing fuel tank and associated equipment and piping in accordance with all applicable building code and environmental regulations unless applicant demonstrates to the satisfaction of the planning director that the fuel tank cannot be removed. The planning director may grant additional time to complete fuel tank removal for good cause. The second condition would read, following removal of the fuel tank and prior to project completion, applicant shall fill in the area to continue the no parking striping from where it is shown on the site plan to the new building. This condition shall not apply if the fuel tank cannot be removed as provided in the preceding condition of approval. And then the third condition would read, independent of the fuel tank removal, applicant shall re-stripe the staff-only parking space adjacent to the fuel tank as a no parking area prior to project completion.
I think that's very good drafting. Does anyone have comments or questions? Okay. Then I'm going to open the public hearing one more time and I'm going to ask the applicant if those three conditions as worded are amenable to you and to court by Zoom.
Yes, we are agreeable.
They're all agreeable.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, and thanks for bearing with us and staff, thank you for doing that. Okay, so with that, someone ready to make a motion? Commissioner Ferguson?
All right, here we go. Do we need to close the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we do. I reclosed the public hearing.
Still ready for a motion? I move that the Planning Commission finds a project that is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to SEQA Guideline Section 15303 and approves coastal development permit 453-23 to demolish an existing fenced area used for golf cart storage and replace it with a 1,920 square foot permanent storage structure located at One Sharp Park Road, assessors partial number 016-430-020, by adopting the attached resolution including conditions of approval in Exhibit A and also including three new conditions. One, add to include the removal of existing fuel tank as a condition of approval as stated by staff, including the discretion for staff as stated by staff. Number two, as a, add as a condition, the inclusion of updated no parking striping as stated by staff as a condition for final permit approval and add as a condition to re-stripe the staff-only parking space as no parking area prior to project completion as stated by staff.
So just for the.
And incorporating all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Yes, sorry, that was next.
Is that motion as made consistent with what staff needs?
Yes, thank you.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Godwin?
I second the motion.
Okay, let's all please vote.
And that motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations. Thanks for. All right, so let's get back to the agenda. So that brings us to commission communications. Do we have any commission communications tonight? Okay, that will take us then to staff communications. Mr. Murdock, anything from you?
Thank you, Chair. For anyone that wasn't tuned in earlier, I want to restate that on Monday, September 25th at 7:00 PM, the Planning Commission will participate in a joint study session with the City Council to discuss the housing element update process. We welcome the public to attend in person or observe the meeting online and to provide any comments to help inform the Council, Commission, and staff work as we continue to revise the draft housing element in response to comments we've received from the California Department of Housing and Community Development.
Okay, thank you very much. So before we adjourn, I'll note that anyone aggrieved by the action of the Planning Commission has 10 calendar days to appeal the decision in writing to the City Council. If any of the above actions are challenged in court, issues which may be raised are limited to those raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Ferguson?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, let's vote. Okay.
Motion passes unanimously.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.
I'm loving the rain of Howser.
Wasn't fast?
It's quick.
Oh, it's just like.
We ought to make it a rule that you can't have any chairs that have kids older.